This conference will now be recorded.
And so many people out here. Okay, welcome everyone. So let's wait. So let's everyone join and then we would be starting off with the session. Okay, so we have Datta, Tanima, Mukul, Aayush, Ravi, Pawal, Sayad, Bhargavi, Raka, Manikanta, Samya, Yogita, Fani, Akshay, Abhishek, Shivani, Gokul, Gajendra, Pallavi, Rahul, Vipin, Tirthak, Manoj, Sumant, Raghu, Saurav, Shipra, Ravi, Santosh, Parth, Sanjay, Tanish, Punit, Sanjay Kumar, Ankith. Okay, two more new people are joining Vipin again. Okay, okay. So I hope so everyone has joined, okay. So let's begin with today's session. Alright guys, I hope so everyone is doing good. Yes or no?
Yes, Mokeesh.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
How are you?
Yes.
I am good, good guys, I am good. Okay, so let me share the screen. Let's see my screen is visible or not. Hmm. I hope so it would be visible.
Yeah, it's visible.
Okay, so I am just giving you two minutes everyone. So what we are going to do, we are going to complete some case studies that were left in the last, okay. I was supposed everyone to meet yourself. Yes. So Sanjita, I must have shared few case studies with you in Google Classroom. Correct guys?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
So it would be saying that please find a data set linked in the following and then you would be having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, okay, some PDFs would be given to you and the links are also given. So kindly do not use Google Sheets over there. I am giving you one minute everyone, please download these files. And please do not interrupt me and say me that where to find a particular file and all. So I am just giving you one minute everyone and people who would be helping me kindly, kindly, kindly raise your hand. Mukul, Saurav, Raka, okay. Datta, Fani. I guess everyone from last batch, Yogita, okay. Is Shipra present today?
Yes, I am Kish.
Hi, hi Shipra. You remember your last class, last batch, task, some tasks was there, I still remember.
No, okay.
You got a good audience also this time. Same, yeah. I, I don't got that PDF for that. Will anyone tell me that when did Sanjita ma'am send it to us? On which day?
It's on twenty seventh December.
Okay, so twenty seventh December, everyone classroom please check you would be getting and I hope so Sanjita must have told you that you have to download these files today also she must have told you. Okay, so let's begin. Hardly it will take how much time? Saurav, what do you think? So how much time it will take us? Two minutes. One minutes. Two minutes. Who is this? Two minutes.
Not two minutes, but it's done. Should not take much.
Would not take much. Okay, amazing. I, I got a time like we have to give some deadline to you, but I told them that I guess these guys can do it within ten to fifteen minutes, all the sheets. Let's see. I already, I already downloaded that, oh. Okay, okay, okay. So let's see if we can do it within ten to fifteen minutes or not and let's see we can prove everyone wrong and I can take guess I have taught really well. So guys, this is the first sheet that we are using, assignment one. Okay. You don't see, you only see the question. How we are going to solve like we are getting some sheets like this. The first thing is that we are going to see the question. No, never see the question first, never ever. You remember in school like people tell us first see the question and then read those paragraphs and all in English language. In English language, we used to do some type of, I think so that image reading or.
Sir, reading and comprehension.
Reading and comprehension, yes, correct. Yeah, yeah. So there also what we used to do, we do not, we never see the questions first. We always read the paragraph first and then we start with the questions. So here also first we will understand some data sheets over here, okay. So what is my data sheet saying that it is for, of a company? What type of company? Now we will decide it. Okay, everyone be on mute and people who have raised their hand, they will only answer, okay. So the first one is the ID is there, some kind of ID is there, okay. Some kind of employee RCD, don't know, okay. Some names are here, like Smith, Johnson, Johnson, Williams, Brown, Davis, Miller and so on. Then some TRC is given to us. Can you tell me what is TRC? Anyone? Right.
Temporary Resident Certificate.
Sir, text residence certificate.
Okay, and all these full forms also you would be getting it. Okay. Now see for example, if you are not getting all these symbols also, we don't have to understand this right now. We are just seeing that this is one particular heading. It must be related to some company and their particular operations. Then the, the, the next one is the earn code. Now if you see the earn code, everything is similar. Okay, all the points are same. And everyone see this? Yeah, and if you to check that there is only one particular unique data is here, how we can check, we can just provide a filter over here. What shortcut we can apply to use filters guys? What shortcut we can apply?
Select all and Ctrl Shift L.
We do not have to again select all also. What we can do, we can go to the heading also.
Okay.
Automatically Excel will detect it, Ctrl Shift L and we would be getting this. Now, we have to click on arrow down. What we should do? Like we want to see the unique value, what we should click?
In the dropdown, in on.
Alt and down button.
Alt and arrow down, correct. So a lot of people are unaware about it. Saurav knows this. I already told everyone in the last bit, Saurav is not a rookie. I still didn't know. Okay, so you can use everyone Alt Arrow Down. Now try to not to use mouse in your Excel sheet, right? Not to use mouse, it will increase your speed. Then Arrow Down, Arrow Down, Arrow Down, Arrow Down, Arrow Down. And now you can see that there is only one point that is S I C. So that means this particular heading, it can be of no use. Understanding guys, why it is of no use? Everyone, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Then quantities there, two, four, eight, it should be different. RPT date, okay, I don't know what is the full form of RPT over here. Then some dates are given, we will check it. So we can see that only two years are given, two thousand ten and two thousand eleven. Okay, and then some days are given. We will do Alt Arrow Down and now you can see it is showing Friday, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday. One day is missing over here.
Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday. Sunday, Saturday, Saturday.
Today, today. What we can predict from here like if Saturday and Sunday is missing?
Working days, working days.
This is the office, office day, actually.
Of data and in this particular office, they are not working for Sat- Saturday and Sunday. Alt Arrow Down, all that doing. So we are getting some unique values again, we cannot read the unique values. So now we are understanding the whole data. The question one, it is saying we find the number of orders and quantities as per the following split. Okay. Getting the question everyone, I would ask you one by one, I would take your names, okay. So I want to know the orders in SP. Numbers of orders in SP. Who wants to give answer, raise your hand please. Everyone. Hands down everyone. Don't, don't give Kauras answer. Everyone hands down, Yogita, you also can, I am doing your hand. Lower hand. Okay, on account of three. Two. One. Mukul, the first.
Sir, we will use count if.
We will use count if. Why and how?
Because we are, we are looking for the number of orders.
Okay, so what we should do over here, like how we can apply the formula? Equals.
So equal to count if.
Count if.
Now we have to select the range.
Which range, which should be the range?
Sir, sir, day. That means H five, H five to the rest of. And after that, after that we have to select the SP from the right table. That means from J, J five.
Okay.
Sorry, J from. Just a moment, let me check. Yeah, J five.
Okay.
Now close the bracket and you have to fix the column also.
Okay, let's fix the column. Let me fix this one also and enter. Done. SP zero. Mukul. You are also getting zero?
No sir, I am getting eighty eight.
You're getting eighty eight?
Sorry, actually sir, you have to select the range in the TRC table.
Yes.
Because SP in the TRC table, so this is my mistake, I think. So we have to select the TRC table from the range.
Correct, we will locate, this is my, this one and done. Everyone getting eighty eight, raise your hand or you can say yes or no in the chat box or unmute yourself and say.
Yes, Mokeesh, eighty eight.
Eighty eight. And let's check the answer everyone. Raka, the next answer is six.
Uh, just a moment. Next answer is six. Yes.
Okay, everyone just match and just see if you are getting some different answer. First one SP eighty eight, SFF is six, SFA, AM is twenty one, SFNRL is nine and S I C K is eighty nine.
Yes.
Are we getting?
Yes.
Okay, everyone hands down, hands down everyone. Now, who is going to help me with the other quantity part? Raise your hand. Raka, first one.
Okay, just a moment. So the formula is equals to sumifs.
Okay, wait, wait. I am just like, what I want to say, if anyone is saying the wrong answer, we will give them the punishment, okay. So just think and then give the answer.
Okay, should I answer?
Yes, 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 go ahead.
Equals to sumifs.
Sumifs, why sumifs, Raka?
Because here we are calculating the quantity.
Okay.
Then bracket start, dollar, I mean then F five to F two hundred seventeen. Fix the column, then comma, D five to D two hundred seventeen, fix the column again, comma, J five. And here I have fixed the, you know, the column only like dollar J five, bracket close, enter. What is this? Still, but I have got. Mokeesh, am I audible?
Yes, yes, you are audible.
Ha, I have got two twenty one point two five.
Yes, what you are doing, what you did a mistake and what Mukul did, can anyone point it out? Raise your hand.
Some. Sir, actually. May I answer, sir?
Yes, yes.
Actually, sir, I think he is, she is referring the different column.
Yes.
No, no, I am referring from my, my Excel sheet actually.
It should be same. When you download it.
So I, I have, ha, so I have done F five to F two hundred seventeen.
For the first, it is asking me the range. Range of SP. D five to D two one seven, something like this. Correct. In what I think Excel that in this particular lot, find this particular word, comma. And if you are finding this word, then do the summation of this line and enter.
Okay, I have also got two hundred twenty one point two five, but you know, Mokeesh, I have applied, I have applied some ifs, IFS.
Doesn't matter. But you should have put some if.
Ha, yeah, that is more accurate.
If someone is calling me, Puddar, Mokeesh and someone is calling Mokeesh Puddar, that doesn't make a sense. Both the things are high, but definitely Mokeesh Puddar is the correct way.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, everyone getting twenty one, two twenty one point two five, forty five, seventy seven point seven five, fifty six point five, three fifty seven. Anyone who is not getting, raise your hand. Anyone who is not getting, raise your hand.
Three fifty seven.
Yes, yes, tell me.
Which one was three fifty seven, you said just now?
Uh, S I Q. Three fifty seven, yes.
Uh, I am getting five twenty eight.
Yes, sir, I also getting five twenty eight.
I am also getting five twenty eight. Uh, I am getting forty eight, eighty one, thirty nine, five twenty.
Uh, Mokeesh, you have not fixed, you have not fixed this range.
So what mistake I am doing?
Uh, this F, F column, we have to fix it.
Okay, so let me fix, okay. Now I can tell Sanjita that yes, like I have taught right, everyone. When you guys are getting a job, half salary I am getting.
Yes, yes, sure.
Yeah, sure, but you have to keep in touch with us for that.
At least with that reason we will meet up.
Correct, correct, correct. So yes, the answer is two twenty one point two five, forty eight, eighty one, thirty nine and five twenty eight. Now everyone just see, like people who were getting those answer that I have got, see you will not get to know only that when your answer is wrong. So whatever you are doing in MS Excel, remember one thing that whenever you are inserting anything or doing anything, the most important part is selecting the data. The second most important part in MS Excel is remember that whatever you do, Excel will apply relative reference. If you are not fixing up the cell, it will apply relative reference by default. Okay, so I hope so everyone, this is done. Any questions in this two part? Order quantity and orders, sorry, order and quantities, raise your hand please. On account of five, four, three, two, yes, Raka, tell first.
No, no, I have, I have no question actually, my mistake, I click, sorry.
Oh, answer any question?
No sir, got it.
Okay, you can lower your hand. Okay, the next one, the same way you have to count if the functions and all. Just tell me the answer, anyone who have done. Tell me the answer.
I have done, Mokeesh.
Yes, tell me.
Twenty nine, fifty nine, sixty, forty eight, twenty six.
And the right. Fifty one, five.
Sixty.
Sixty.
Forty eight.
Forty eight.
Twenty six.
Twenty six. And twenty.
One, one, triple one.
Two, two, five point seven five, two sixty, then two zero two and one one eight.
I hope so everyone is getting this. Yes, no, everyone, we are moving to the next sheet.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, sir. Okay, and I guess this calculation also you guys can do. Okay, any questions, anyone raise your hand.
Um, Mokeesh, third, third one, can we?
This one.
Yeah, I think index match or which one shall we use?
So guys.
So we can use sumifs. Sumifs, sir.
I have, I have used sumifs.
Yes, I have also used sumifs.
Getting this, Saurav.
Sumifs, but how? Because Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday all are different, no? How can you use sum?
Yeah, sumifs for, it's for the, I am in simultaneous conditions, no? So index match, I think.
Some this one now, okay, okay. Take it, take it, what is, let's move to the next.
Getting how?
Sir, can you, can you explain the thought? I did not get it.
Okay, who wants to help me out guys?
I am sure.
Yes, Anshu, tell me.
Yes, sir, sir, we can use sumifs over here.
Okay, some ifs with us.
Well, it depends what we are using, like we are using for orders or we are for, we are calculating for quantity. So I have calculated for orders over here.
Okay.
So we will use count if.
No count. Okay, yes, sorry.
Hmm, for order, yeah, for quantity we will take some.
Yeah, for quantity we will use some, but if we are calculating for like orders, we will use count ifs. So the condition will be equal to count ifs.
Okay.
Then we will refer to the range, criteria range one, that is our TRC.
Okay, done.
Uh, then we will criteria, criteria one will be our SP, that is mentioned in the table.
Hmm, yes.
Yes, and then range, criteria range two is our day, that is day column.
Okay.
And then we will select the criteria, that is Monday.
Okay.
Monday, sell with Monday.
We have to fix this.
Yes, sir. Even we have to fix the range.
No, no, Mokeesh, don't, don't, like you fix but like only the column, fix the column only.
Only the column?
Ha, yeah, like dollar K twenty one, that way. I have shared the result in chat box.
Are we getting fifteen one, three, two, eight, zero?
No.
Sir, actually I have used sumifs.
Fifteen one, three, two, eight is the right answer.
I have got thirty three point seven five, eight, ninety point two five.
Are you doing sum if?
Sumifs.
Okay, three point seven five.
Yes, then it's.
Yes, yes.
Then it's right, the same thing about Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Getting this, everyone. Any question?
I have done mistake. Mokeesh, have I done mistake?
No, 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 see, what did, you hear no question is mentioned. Either you have to calculate the orders, number of orders or the quantity.
Okay, okay.
Maybe if you are calculating. Yes, you have calculated the quantity part over here.
Okay, okay, got it, thank God, okay.
Okay, I hope so this is clear to everyone. Let's move to the next sheet, assignment number two. Okay, so just tell me, raise your hand, okay, Anshu, your hand down. Let's see, we will go now really fast because we have only five minutes left. Let's tell me how we can do this. I will choose, I will choose, I will choose. Mukul has given answer, Anshu has given answer. Everyone, please be on mute. Everyone, please be on mute.
Hello.
Yes, your name.
Connect, Vipin, Vipin, yes, sir.
Yes, Vipin, tell me.
Yes, sir, so as we have to calculate the percentage, so first we point to and we have to also find the error also. So is quantity with errors.
If error.
Error, yes, and H four.
H four.
Uh, divide by D four.
I don't think so this is the right one.
Yes, sir, and into hundred.
No, 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 no.
No, sir, into hundred and for the height, the errors, we can use the double semi colon and we can write down the error as well we want or just keep left.
Make it simple, make it simple.
Sir, sir, may I?
Next one, next one. Your name?
Saditha, sir, I think we can use E error function.
No, no, make it simple, more simple.
Mokeesh, normal division, normal division.
See, the, there are two options, Mokeesh, we can use E function also, basic one.
Yes. Just, sorry, sorry, I am cutting you because of lack of time.
Okay, okay, sure, sure.
So if function we will apply everyone, my logical is what? Calculate the expense percentage. So I know this one that if I apply this, divide by this, my budget, okay, let's leave it like this, okay. Bracket close, I will not close the bracket, sorry. Comma, if I am getting this, if I am getting this, what I want?
Uh, this only.
This only. How should I get this?
Very, uh, value of true means you can again put that, no, H four divide by D four, same, repeat that after comma and if false.
Divide by it and if false, then something like this.
And hyphen. Let's see. I used if error, that was a simpler one. So we can, in if also we can.
Now what we are getting this, division.
Sir, we have to use E error, otherwise it will not come. Yes, sir, I also have used E error.
Much more, your vocal.
Can't be computed.
Can be equal to if error.
Uh, the, this one, H four by D four, bracket, man.
Four by D four.
Comma, and ports, hyphen, that's it, enter. I close bracket and enter.
Double, double.
Everyone getting this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this one you can change by conditional formatting. What I want to show to you guys that one particular thing can be applied with different thing and different formulas. So now you can see with if also we can apply, with if error also we can apply, we can first calculate the percentage and then we can also apply the if one. Like we have calculated a percentage over here, if this number is greater than zero, then give me this particular number only or is give me hyphen. I hope so everyone is getting this.
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Yes, yes.
File number three, just, just tell me number three guys, unmute yourself and tell me number three, let's see.
Wait, sir, wait, wait.
Yes, number three.
Yes, sir, number three.
Number three. Wait.
Yes, sir, number three.
Okay, five, four, three.
Number three, sir.
Number three.
First question. First question, Shibrath.
Sorry, Mukesh, I am downloading the file right now, my system is so slow.
Okay, Yogita, first question. Five, four, three, two, one, Anshu.
Yes, sir. So we have to apply if over here and in if we have to use another formula for and. Um, in second option and first we can do with this only.
Okay, correct. This.
Vouchers, that is vouchers uh column is greater than. Ten. Comma. Bonus, else slacker, inverted commas may we can write.
Correct, everyone getting this, yes or no, guys?
Yes, sir, same.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir, yes, sir. Well, Anshu, you only.
Uh, yes, sir, equal to if.
If.
Uh, then bracket may we can start another formula for, uh for and.
Why we are using and? You are right, tell me why we are using and?
Uh, because we, we have to meet both the conditions, that is uh the voucher are more than equal to ten and the days between uh v- uh voucher entry. Hmm, yes, and the days between voucher entry and payment is less than equal to three. So we have to meet both the condition, that's why we are using and.
Okay, correct, so this one. It should be greater than or equal to ten?
Ten, comma. Then C eight, C eight, uh this. Is less than equal to three.
Okay.
Uh, then bracket close, comma. Inverted comma, we can write uh bonus, else slacker.
Everyone getting this, yes or no?
Yes, Mukesh.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, man. Okay, the last one. If vouchers are more than equal to ten or days between vouchers and payments is less than equal to three, then bonus else lacquer. Anshu, you want to answer this?
Uh, yes, sir, here we can use uh si- uh simply, as we have used and over in the previous one, we can use or in this one. The formula will be same, but we have to use or instead of and.
Correct, correct, I hope so it's clear to everyone.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mukesh.
On a count of three, let's me see, let me hear all the yes, three, two, one.
Yes, Mukesh, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, yes.
It's like I am running a DJ show right now. I will do this, so we have done, this one was assignment three, let's do the assignment four. Uh, Mukesh, in this D and C both question are exactly same, right? Was the.
No, no, no.
Acha or have one. And and or. Ha, ha, connected. Here, what we should apply? Fill the respective data in blank cell for, from the data given below using Excel. These are my characters, these are my shows, I want to apply the shows, I want to find this particular name and give the show name.
We look up, we look up, we look up.
We look up, everyone, anything else, guys, anything else?
Index match.
No. No, no, no. Index match you can apply, but the easiest one would be we look up only, equal to we look up. This is my look up value, comma, my table array is this one, I will fix the table array, comma. No, my table array is wrong. Equal to we look up, this is my look up value, comma, my table array would be this one, everyone, I will fix the table. Comma, my column index would be two or one. Two.
Two, two.
Means I have taught everyone right. I hope so everyone will be getting these answers, we are not doing this. Everyone, feel here clear, 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 yes or no?
Yes, clear, clear, clear.
Clear, clear.
Yes, sir.
Okay, again, Koki, saj bhi kabhi baavati, clear, clear, clear. Okay, guys, okay, the next one is the most important one, okay? Raise your hand if you want to answer this, okay? Mokta, Anshu, Raka, okay, let me take one by one. For a, let's take for a video. Okay. Tell me the process. Uh, the grading one, right? This one. Sir, Mukesh, where are you right now in your screen? I think there is a live. Okay, so now in the later grade. It's a little bigger for everything. For each. Three, four and. To banana.
Mukesh, I can answer this.
Okay, tell me, just answer me how we can do, because this would be homework.
So it is a big one, the answer is, the answer is if and H five less than K six, comma, L five. Comma, if and.
That's it, that's it.
Sir, sir, sir.
Yes, yes, yes.
Sir, we can do this way, uh we look up and with approximate match or otherwise we can use a look up function only.
And it's. And you cannot do, why we look up? Why? Because, okay, I am getting one by one, why we cannot use we look up? See gradings, what we do, we always give it in a range. Zero to forty fail, forty to sixty if you remember pass, sixty to hundred distinction.
If all. Because it will with a- approximate match it will come.
No.
Do it, uh.
No, 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 it won't come. Believe me, it won't come, this would be your homework, we will check it, do it. Someone has told the correct method, okay? So you can use. Hand function together and then you have to check it, you can give less than, greater than, we will check this particular thing only, that you are doing it.
Uh, uh, did I do right?
Let me, sir, hello, sir, let me share my screen, uh show.
No, 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 no sharing screen time, I got only thirty minutes, then also I am extending this. Okay, uh, sorry to interrupt, is there a simpler way apart from that formula if and? Which one you can use, tell me? I am, I was thinking, like maybe if you know. No, no, there is.
There is another function o- only look up, it will also work.
That will give you exact match. Look up will not work.
Uh, that will give exact match.
Even in the.
Did I do, did I do wrong? Sorry to.
You did have, you did right.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so this was the session, this was only to discuss this, okay? Guys, I am solving this, but we were only allowed to discuss this, you can apply if and and function. Now we will check how you can apply this if and and function over here.
Okay, sir, we will do.
Okay, so this was assignment four, let me discuss assignment five with you. So here I guess everyone can do, okay? How we can find the date functions and all, that twist over here is only one thing, that is of quarter. You can find period, you can find year, you can find month, the only twist is quarter over here. Just I am saying you how you can do the hint I am giving you. This, anyone who can just share, like Anshu, have you done this quarter part?
I, I have done this, Mukesh, I can share.
Okay, tell me.
Okay, so the for. So the formula is if, uh, uh, if uh bracket open and bracket open G four less than equals to three. Comma, uh inverted comma start quarter one, inverted comma close. Comma, if and G four less than equals to six, then comma, quarter two, within inverted comma, then comma.
Any other way, anyone have done?
Yes, sir, I have done it.
Yes, sir, I have.
Yes, Anshu, word.
So I have used month function over here, like month, then uh the cell, required cell, then I have divided it by three.
Correct.
Yes, and but when I divided by three, uh some of the numbers uh are in decimals, so I have used another function, uh roundup.
Round up to round that particular thing, okay?
Yes, yes, sir.
So that means, guys, you are getting this, okay, I am speaking wait, so that means one particular function. In Excel, you can do it with two, three, four methods.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this was the only major thing that we wanted to discuss. Assignment six is there or not? I guess assignment six is not there.
Mukesh, there is a background noise.
Private table, private chart. Yes, private chart is there, let me. Discuss that also, sign one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, I need to stop the screen sharing. So. So it was pivot table grouping and converting data types, okay? So we will only do the discussion, guys, we were only allowed to do the discussion. I by mistake, I told you all the answers in the first part. So just see, it is here create a chart depicting the order count date wise. Okay, so we knows how to use pivot table, everyone, or pivot table?
Yeah.
Mukesh, here I have faced problem, you know?
Tell me.
Also while doing it, I was trying to create the pivot table uh with dates, but somehow uh I got only January and December.
Why with dates? The question is saying with the order count date by.
Ha, date wise, that is why I have uh tried to do with dates.
To which, date wise, the count date wise, yes, you can do, no problem.
No, I, I know I can do, I here only day, you know, it's showing the dates only, I mean the months only.
Yeah, so how we can do that, anyone?
No, I.
You see, um, we can just extract the month outside, like equals month and then we can uh do a, what is that, uh sum if? Okay, no, month wise. Okay, so the question was, create a chart depicting order count wise, okay, so our orders. Which one was the order, this one, quantity, no?
Yes, quantity, quantity.
Quantity.
Hmm, banja gaya, sir, hmm.
It will, it will, just do here, here, there, it will come definitely, guys.
Uh, how could you do? I mean, uh after selecting T R C, then we can find, straight?
Yeah, that is the only count, no? Count date wise.
Okay, actually I was doing, uh you know, quantity and and the date.
Yeah, I am giving you the answers only, okay? I won't give you this answer, I will just only discuss, find out the P O amount. Voucher amount, fund number, number of units, monthly and vendor wise, this how we can do just one answer.
No, I couldn't do this one also, I couldn't do.
We can do this, we can do this.
We can do this through pivot one?
Yes, exactly. Now clean the data and do everything, you will get it everything. Okay, now convert the original number data to data shown in the next column using Excel function to result column, have anyone used this?
No, sir.
Mukesh, I have done this, but except the last two questions.
Yes, so what was it?
No, okay, so this is equals to A, A four. Equals to A four.
Equals to A four.
You click.
The cheating ho gaya.
Arre, sir, cheating to sub.
Oh, no, this is not. Uh, no, this is, this is exactly cheating ho gaya.
I didn't know, no, then I can do it from that, you know, that tab, I went to the tab and changed the formats.
Yeah, that is, no, that is the only thing that we want. Change it to format C. The first one is that equal to value. Getting this, everyone?
Hmm.
Yes.
Few values, few portions of value portions, okay? Few portions which are not value, you have to change those to individual formats, their respective formats. And this one, but to. No, not what, no.
How could you do the T R I M?
So this one is a trim formula, okay, why this one is not coming, I don't know. Um, it should be. Yeah, this one you also you can do this. So you can also use trim function, okay? Trim function, what is trim function? That means say for example, if I am writing M U K E S H, space, space, P O D B A R. The extra space it will remove, equal to trim. Let's see this. If I count the numbers of uh this one, okay? How I can count this? Tell me a formula, uh like I can count the number of text. Equal to len. Oh, yeah. Equal to len. Thirty. Okay, getting this, everyone, I guess I have completed, I have discussed all the things.
Mukesh, one question.
Yes, one by one, Raka.
Okay, so the second pivot table, in that case I couldn't understand how to do that, can you just give me a hint?
This, clean the data and then do.
Data cleaning, just manually I have to clean the whole data.
Yes, yes.
Oh, God.
Okay, next one, who wants to ask the question?
Uh, Mukesh, Datta, here, in the last, in the last assignment. Like the number was, you just shared that one. The.
Tell me, tell me.
Last one. In, in that, uh, we have to converted uh the value, no?
Yes.
In the format.
See, there are different, there are different things, see, the first one is the number, I am just seeing you one hint, this is all about your format. Either it is roundup, decimal, whatever, you have to do it individually. Okay, okay. More questions, guys?
Yeah, I said, I was, I was facing one problem in assignment number four, we look up formula, I think I haven't practiced, that's why.
Okay, that is practicing, so guys, uh I guess all the questions are answered, this was just a review thing. So this would be your homework, complete the file. Maximum time that you are getting is twenty four hours. That is also very much enough, okay, because I have completed everything, mostly you just have to complete and submit it to Sanchitama, everyone. Okay, guys.
Okay.
Okay, okay, Mukesh.
Hello. Everyone, go on energy, guys, getting this, yes or no?
Yes, yes, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so guys, everyone, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Hello, hello, hello.
Nice meeting you again.
Hello, Sayad, yeah, Mukesh, hello. Just because of you, I attend this session because everybody is celebrating victory of my brother of becoming a mayor, deputy mayor. Okay, okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. All right, all right.
Your brother is mayor, wow.
Yeah, more discussion, add more discussion. Let it be. So guys, congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Okay, congratulations, Sayad, thank you so much everyone for attending the class, happy new year in advance. This is your homework, complete your assignment and without fail submit assignment by tomorrow sharp at eight. Eight P M is the last end, after that you are not going to get any deadline, that's all from my end guys. Thank you so much, thank you so much for attending, if you have any question, write the question, pass it to Sanchita, she will share with me. Okay. So can you close the shop guys, yes or no?
Yes, okay, bye.
Bye, Mukesh, take care.
Bye, bye, sort of bye, Raka, Anshu.
Bye, sir, bye, sir.
Bye, 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 happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.